Start the meeting. Item one, to receive and accept apologies for absence. Got Pat Warwick and Toby Madison. So I'm happy to accept the apologies from Pat. And from Toby. Thank you. Like to welcome Graham onto the council. Two, item two, to note declaration of members' personal prejudicial and disclosable pecuniary interests in respect of items on the agenda. Whose phone was that, Beryl? Oh. Item three, the minutes. 3.1, to confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on the 14th of February 2023 are a true and accurate record. Has everybody had a chance to see those? Everyone happy? 3.2, to receive an update on items from the previous meeting, if not agenda items, for this meeting. Any updates at all, Michelle?
No, other than in your packs, nothing else further.
Thank you. Item four, to receive reports. 4.1, chairman's report. And that's again a very short one this week. On the 15th of February, I attended the meeting at Hare's Green Play Area. And on 16th, I attended the finance meeting. 4.2, vice chairman's report.
Chairman, even shorter, on the 16th of February, I attended the Finance Committee meeting.
4.3, district councillor's report. Has everybody had a chance to see that? Claire sent that through. Have you got a summary? Do you want to... If you, like I say, if you come, this is the first one down here. Whichever one you want.
Thank you, chairman. And so, next Monday, the County Council Cabinet will consider funding for 12 projects to shape Norfolk's economic future, using 1.5 million from the local business rights fund. And I'm very pleased to say that the proposed Weyland Digital and Creative Media Centre in Watton is one of the projects under consideration. Furthermore, through the council's social infrastructure funding, the Charlotte Harvey Trust has been awarded £38,000 to refurbish and improve its toilets at the youth and community centre. I'm also pleased to see that the Setford Road Trot is now completed and looking good. And I hope councillors agree that it was money worth spent. And I thank councillors for their support for the project through the parish partnership scheme. And the scheme to reduce the speed limit in the High Street to 20 miles per hour, which I'm funding through, my county members' budget has finally gone through the design process and is at the stakeholder consultation stage. After that is the traffic regulation order, which is the legal part of the process. And I'm afraid that does take quite a while. But however, all being well, that scheme should be delivered within 12 months. So, and I know that's on your, on your, on your agenda a bit later on. So I hope you can support that. The public consultation on the County Council Devolution Deal is open on the council's website and site. And I'd encourage everyone to take part and have your say. And all the details of the proposals are, are on the website. I was pleased to support the recent successful Breckland Community Match Funding Round and the successful bid from Norfolk Clubhouse with just over £2,000, the funds from which will provide weekly cooking and healthy eating workshops at the youth and community centre for people with chronic mental health issues. From section 106 contributions, Breckland Council has been able to make 107,000 available to help deliver escape path for Watton. And with the funding now secure, the sports centre should shortly be able to submit the planning application to that effect. And through Breckland's Market Town Initiative Scheme, I've been very pleased to support £30,000 of investment for the lock to provide a new boardwalk pathway to enhance the area for both residents and visitors. Breckland's also secured 1.6 million of UK Shared Prosperity funding with the council's investment plan, agreed with the Department of Levelling Up in Communities. And this will mainly be spent between this year and 2025 and will enable the council to direct resources or funding to key local priorities, particularly those that help vulnerable residents and businesses and, and the aspirations set out in the future Breckland programme. And finally, new battery collection service has been launched in Breckland and residents can now recycle used household batteries by leaving them out for collection alongside their normal bin collections, which means that scarce metals can be recycled and then batteries should be left in freezer type bags on top of your normal bin collection time. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Tina, do you have a report?
Yeah, can I just add, I haven't really made a report. I think Claire's comprehensively covered everything that's come out in the last few weeks. Just like to reiterate that we have had a lot of funding streams come up with the Coronation Grants and various other things coming out of Breckland. And it alarmed me a little bit when I got to the meeting on this week, or last week, and they said that the cut off point was Friday, bearing in mind the meeting was Wednesday. I was, while in the meeting, I was quickly messaging Jane and Sue to let, remind them that they, these grants were there. And both of them had actually not finished the completion. When I went in to check on Friday, whether they had got the submission for the grants, it hadn't come in yet. That was for the £500 for the Coronation Grant. And that ran out on Friday. So I'm hoping it has gone through. I don't know whether Michelle can confirm that. But it just, there's so many streams available. And we're passing it on to the office and it's not always being acted upon quick enough. I know there has been problems there, but it's just something that we need to be aware of because there are these grants out there. And there's also some very big grants as well, which highlights refurbishment of toilets. Had we been project ready to submit it at the time, we might have saved ourselves quite a substantial sum of money by tapping into that funding stream. It was brought up a while back regarding this money for the toilets, but it was never acted on. So what I'd like to see really is just, we need to be more proactive on getting projects ready to go on these funding streams. So I don't know, you know, something that we need to get our head around in the coming months, maybe to start bringing some projects to go on the shelf, if you like, but just to be ready when these funding ideas come up. So I just wanted to add that on to the report.
Thank you, Tina. Yes, Catherine.
It was just about the £500 for the Coronation. I think, I might be wrong Tina, but I think that Sue has been working with the sports centre and the decision was made for the sports centre to go for that.
Sue was supposed to hand it in because I messaged her and she said that she had forgotten to put it through but was going to do it. So I went, chased it in on Friday. And she, she is working with the sports centre, but the application is coming from the town council office. And Stefan at Breckland hadn't got it Friday, but I said to him, please, you know, it is on its way. So I just hope if we can chase that up to make sure, because we don't want to lose that £500 quid.
Thank you. Yes, Keith.
So sorry. Yeah. Yeah, not an awful lot to say. But I did go to a presentation the other day at Breckland on their planning design guide, which is looking to actually get designs on, for, you know, developments which are sympathetic and take into consideration local characteristics and things. If it comes off, it'll be very good, but my biggest problem with it is basically 10 years too late. You know, we've already suffered a lot from what planning does to us. And hopefully, if we get this design guide in place, then it will start to improve things for the future.
Thank you.
No, I did miss the full council meeting on the Wednesday because BT had booked in to come and put my full fibre in. And I didn't realise the council was on Wednesday and not normal Thursday, so I missed it.
Thank you. Item 4.4, the county councillors' report, which you read all of it all in one, didn't you, on that? So that's fine. And we've got a copy of that, Michelle, because you emailed it out. 4.5, deputy clerk's report. I haven't got anything further to report on than what I already have in my packs. Thank you. Item five, to note and amend the works in progress list. Yes, Catherine.
I noticed that on the list, there's several things now in green. And I wonder whether they ought to be taken off the list? And if there's any work that has come from that, it's a separate piece of work from, you know, the, the original thing, whether that should come back so we can consider what next needs to be done? Because there's some that they've actually fulfilled what was minuted at the time. And I think that could probably come off rather than keep them on when there's other bits of work coming from it, if you're not to make.
Thank you for that suggestion. Any other comments on the works in progress? Item six, public participation. Nobody around? Item seven, finance. With item seven, I'd like to move 7.37 to below the line. Is everybody happy with that? So item 7.3, recommendations from the meeting held on February 16th. Item one, that in this instance, the 50% contribution to the work related to pigeon control on the King's Arms and Weyland Hall be agreed. A separate invoice of the £2,539 for Watton Town Council should be provided. Have we had that, Michelle, do you know? Have we had an invoice from Harvey for £2,539 for pigeons?
I think, did, was it passed to go to finance for the last one?
Yeah.
I think Harvey was waiting on this committee meeting and what our decision would be. And what he'd written on his paperwork was there, should be or could be an invoice for the, for the Watton Town Council. And what we're saying in this is we want a separate invoice because we have to be able to passport it through our own financial systems. So when Michelle informs Harvey about this decision, presumably she will say, prior to a payment, we will need the invoice.
So on that basis then, should we change, should be provided to must be provided? Because we can't pay, you know, that money without having an invoice, can we?
Everyone in favour of changing that to a must? Is everyone happy on that one to actify to go ahead upon receipt of the invoice?
Yep.
Item two, that a letter should be sent to Mr Woodjack requesting that any future joint work should be fully discussed and agreed prior to any work being initiated. Everyone happy to carry that one? Item three, that the quote for 2023 and 2024 from TTSR for grass cutting work at Hare's Green be accepted. The cost for 2023 is £1,931 plus VAT. And the cost for 2024, £1,989.19 plus VAT. Everyone, yes Catherine?
Just to say that this is, is an amendment in addition to the contract that TTSR has with us. So because we've now accepted Hare's Green and we've got the money coming across to us, that enables us to increase the contract so that we can have a grass cut by the same company as does our regular maintenance.
All those in favour? Thank you. Item four, that the contract for Jubilee Gardens, beginning again in March, at the new rate of £38 per visit, be agreed. Is everybody happy with that? Okay. Item five, that the report from the internal auditor, including the recommended action plan, be accepted. That a councillor be nominated to check on payroll. Has everybody now had a chance to see the auditor's report, which was emailed out? Anybody got any comments on that? Catherine, do you want to...
There are only two issues on the auditor's report. It was a very positive report, which we're obviously pleased about. The business about the councillor nominated to check on payroll, it is an issue that has been raised at audit before and we do really need to implement that now. What we, what we were hoping to do was either at this meeting or at the next meeting, that we can appoint somebody who can just take that, not to do it every month, but several times a year, just check on the payroll papers so that they can be, we're showing clearly that we do have a transparent process for that.
Yes, Tom.
Yeah, could I just ask a question of Catherine, in your capacity as head of the Finance Working Group? Is this something that would be time intensive? Is it something we could perhaps incorporate in the role of head of the Finance Working Group? I appreciate you're doing that at the moment, but come May, we don't know who's doing what. Is that something we can more formalise by putting it within the job description?
You could, but I, I think it would be better if it was somebody independent. So we have somebody independently looking at the bank reconciliation. And I think it's, it's more transparent if you have separate people doing, doing that, people who are nominated and named just for the audit trail, really. It, it won't be labour intensive, it just needs somebody coming in, say, I don't know, two or three times a year, just looking at the paperwork, sampling and signing it off. Yeah, dip check, really.
7.3, number six.
We need to agree it, and if there is a nomination.
I'm not doing very well because I've missed a big chunk out as well. Is anybody happy with that recommendation? Would anybody like to volunteer themselves to be that particular councillor?
Something that could be done prior to like a finance meeting or something like that? Yeah, in that case, if it's, yeah, well, I'm happy to take on that role, bearing in mind it might only be till May.
Agreed. All those in favour, Dom? Item six, that there be no increase in allotment, cemetery and market fees for 23, 24. Has anybody got any comments on that? Yes, Keith?
Yeah, I just hope this doesn't roll on for too many years because we've had this in the past where we said, oh, we don't want to put them up this year, or perhaps we shouldn't put them up this year. And then by the time year five comes around, you know, there's suddenly a big increase. And people think, why has it gone up that much? Well, it's gone up that much because we didn't put it up a little bit each year. So I can understand this year why we're not, but I just want to make sure that it's not something that rolls over for another four or five years until we suddenly realise we've got to put them up by 10%.
I think it's something that finance, we discuss annually. So I'm just going to skip back to 7.1. No, I'm not, I'm going to agree. Is, is everybody happy that there are no increases? All those in favour? Now I'm going to go back to 7.1, to approve the payments for February 2023. They did get emailed out to you earlier. Is everybody happy with those payments? All those in favour of accepting the payments? 7.2, in reverse, it's to receive the finance committee meeting minutes, which we've just gone through, held on 16th of February. Has everybody had a chance to...
Sorry, so can I just go back to 7.1? There was two additional payments to, no, sorry, can I do that? And they were just, one for road closure for Norfolk County Council of £38.66 for the antiques and another road closure payment of the same amount for festive markets. So we've got both road closures coming through. I'm sure Tina can name them.
Everyone happy that we're paying those road closures? Not having a good day here. It's been a long day. Sorry. Right. Item eight, to consider supporting the proposed speed limit in Watton High Street. You should have had in the pack the line showing you that it's going from traffic lights to roundabout for that. Yes, Tina?
Long overdue and I fully support it. And I thank Claire for working hard to get it, but I think it's really needed in our High Street.
Yes, Michelle?
I had an email from PC Austin Clark. I send him the agenda pack every time, just in case they want to report. He did come back and say it would be of value to have the expert advice of our traffic management officer, Jack Askew. I do believe there could be strong opposition from major employer in the area. And he just wanted me to pass this on to council for you two, bear in mind. That's all I know.
Thank you. Yes, Dom?
If we are to speak to Jack Askew, we'll have to be quick because he's retiring very shortly, sort of thing. So, so I've got to meet him with Jack next week, but I think that's, that's beginning the mark, halfway through March, that's, once he's taken his holiday, that's, that's him finished, so.
Yes, Tina.
Bearing that in mind, I think we should give it our full support now because we definitely need it.
I was going to speak on it, but I think if we're going to, if the majority is going towards that, I'm, I'm in support of it. Excuse me.
Yes, Graham?
I can use the... Is there any possibility with the High Street of having, as I just say, pedestrian zone for one day of the week or something similar to that? Because similar towns do that sort of thing.
I think it would be highly unlikely due to the fact of the industry at the very end of our High Street. Because it would cause them to either divert round back where we have the diversion where we've got a road closure on. Claire's nodding as well. I think we've got to be realistic and a little step of 20 mile an hour is better than 30, which is supposed to be, although a lot of things go through a lot faster. But if, if we can at least get it down to 20.
But even with a 20 mile an hour limit, that's still got to be enforced, isn't it? So someone's got to be there to enforce it all the time.
I couldn't hear that, sorry. Yes, Peter?
If, if the large employer has got a concern, it would have a bit more illegal parking on the High Street and then they couldn't go fast, could they?
Yes, Keith?
I think it's the same as what Graham just said. It's all very well having a 20 mile an hour sites in there. If nobody's going to enforce it, it's not worth putting it there. So we've got, if we go with this, we've got to say that we need people to come and enforce it. Because I get, a friend of mine lives up on the Brandon Road, tells me that they're going down there at 60 mile an hour. Well, I don't know whether it's 60 mile an hour, because they're late for work and they scream into the car park there. And, you know, unless it's enforced, it's not worth having. So we've really got to push for some enforcement on it.
I think we can do that. And also, I know when I went to the snap meeting last time, Austin was talking about these black boxes that you see on the side of the road with the little rubber strips going. You would need to have one of those on, on there so that you can prove that people are going faster. It doesn't tell you who, but, and then you've, you've got your evidence, which is what we would have to have to say, on certain days, you can see that the traffic here is not taking any notice of that 20 mile an hour. Therefore, we've got substantial evidence to, to have somebody come out solely on those days to enforce it. And then hopefully it would be, I don't, it would be lovely to have somebody there every day, but realistically, the police haven't got that facility. Perhaps you'd like to start a neighbourhood speed watch, Keith?
The government just announced, actually, I don't know if anybody saw it, that we're going to have eight day weeks and I'll do it on the eighth day.
Yes, Catherine and then James.
I understand what you're saying about enforcement, but we have speed restrictions on all roads. Just because people do 80 on the motorway, we don't increase the speed limit or let it be 80, it's 70. And if people are caught, they can be prosecuted. If we think that 20 is suitable on the High Street, that's what we should have and 20 is safer. The bit about actually enforcement is a separate issue and we would like things to be properly enforced in a perfect world. That doesn't stop us from saying 20 should be the speed, that's what we should endorse. And as for the, a day a week closing of the High Street, if we could ever have had that, we wouldn't have had to move the market. So I think we should do what we can do, which is support this for the 20 miles an hour on the High Street.
Thank you, Catherine. Yes, James?
Thank you. The police were out on Sunday on Deere Road, I don't think anyone saw that. Another thing I want to mention is, we've got the flashy sign, there's a proper name for them, isn't there? SAM signs. Are they just 30? Or can we change them? Is there a way of changing the screen or anything on them or the LED? Would it be a thought of when this, if this goes ahead, to put them up just for a couple of weeks? If we can move them, can't we, with permission to move them around? Just to put them either end of the High Street on the 20 setting, just to sort of reinforce it, rather than just them being plain signs that...
Dom?
I fully support the 20 mile an hour speed limit. The other market...
The other market towns have got it, have used that as the starting point and then had traffic calming put in on, on their high streets or other roads and everything to, to make sure that it's nearly impossible to, to exceed the 20 mile an hour limit without damaging your car or van or whatever. So I think we should just use this as the first step, you know, whether it's controlled or not, you know, by the police or whatever. But just go for it at the moment.
I was going to ask, following up what James said, whether Claire, as part of this process, could ensure that highways let us put the SAM sign up on the high street? Because, you know, we have, we're only allowed to put it in specific places. And so if we could put one in the high street where it, where it doesn't actually say 30 mile, it just tells you what speed you're doing. But that might be helpful. So if passed by your proposal, I hope it's not too late, you can get highways to say, yes, we can put one up on the high street. I think that would help in foot, we're not exactly in force, but would remind people once the limit has changed.
So all those in favour of supporting the 20 mile an hour speed limit? Yep. Thank you. Item nine, to receive the first draft of the revised allotment tenancy agreement. That again was in your pack because everybody had a chance to read through. Is everybody happy with how it's written out? Yeah?
We're not just going to receive it, are we going to say that's what we want as the tenancy agreement then? Because the motion just says to receive it. I mean, I would propose that we accept the draft tenancy agreement from, I think it's from now, isn't it? And, and use that as our tenancy agreement amended, put Watton Town Council in future.
All those in favour? Get that sorted out, thank you. Item 10, to accept the Lynnmore industrial unit rent review. I think it's a rock and a hard place really. We don't have any choice, do we? Or we're out of the, the unit. All those in favour of accepting the rent review for Lynnmore? Yep. Item 11, to consider requests from the twinning association for storage space within the Lynnmore unit. Pass that over to Beryl?
Margaret Divine has been storing a lot of the twinning things at hers. And basically she's run out of room for the gazebo. Is there any chance that the gazebo can be put in the unit? Because it only comes out once or twice a year and she would give good notice of when it needs to come out and they'll come and get it.
Can I just ask, as you're charge of the unit?
It's the same sort of size as what the council one is, the town council.
There's enough room to store that.
Yeah, it's on wheels and. It's folded and in its little thing. It's not up.
Has anyone else got any other comments on, on that request? Yeah, just store them upright. All those in favour of? That's Carrie, thank you. Item 12, planning, to consult on planning applications received since the last meeting. Yes, Keith? And Beryl? Sorry, Sue, can I just go back on that? Would you let Margaret Divine know, Michelle? Sorry, Sue.
That's all right.
Over to you, Jane, please, for planning.
Okay, we haven't got a lot this week. 12.1, 3PL 2023 0133LB, replacement windows and doors at 12 Harvest Street, that's a listed building application. Has anybody got any comments? No, then we go to 12.2, 3PL 2023 0130LU, use of Opal House as a home for up to four looked after young persons between eight to 18, certificate of lawfulness. Opal House, 61 Griston Road, we actually dealt with that on the last agenda at 10.7. It was listed as noted and no comments were submitted. 12.3, 3PL 2022 1080D, application for approval of reserve matters following outline approval for six dwellings, rear of three and three A, Deere Road amended plans. Now, I couldn't find anything to raise on this. Liz did contact me from the drainage group, she said she had some comments to submit. I hadn't seen them at the time, so I drafted a response for us. Now I have seen them, I think the response stays the same because they're very technical and they've got a lot of expert knowledge, which I don't know. So what I worded it was, the town council has no issues to raise, it is aware that the drainage group have some concerns over drainage matters. The town council is aware of the detailed local knowledge of the group in relation to drainage issues and request that their submission be given careful consideration. Is that appropriate?
Can I just ask on that one, because it's going to be the six houses, it looked like there's only that one entrance and exit right onto the Deere Road.
Yep.
Is that something that we could?
No, we already objected on those bases and it was granted. Yeah. Yeah, we objected on overdevelopment access and car parking. And we lost it. So the next one is 12.4, I don't think I missed any yet, no. TRE 2023 0068 TPO works to an oak tree to reduce the canopy, the old Vicarage Norwich Road. I've got no comments. Has anybody got anything else they want to offer? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 13, to pass a resolution to exclude the public and press to consider legal matters.